We'll go ahead and bring to order the August 2012 PCOSON City School Board Meeting. First on the agenda is the Pledge to the Flag. Everybody stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next is additions and/or modifications to the agenda. Dr. Parrish, do we have any?
We have none this evening.
Okay, next will be recognitions. Is it Virginia State Board of Education proclamation presented by Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Carter, to come. We have actually received from the Virginia Department of Education, and really it's from the State Board of Education, a proclamation recognizing our school division for having achieved accreditation through advanced ed. That's the process that we went through last spring with the visiting team. And all final reports are in, and we are officially fully accredited. So the Virginia State Board of Education has recognized the school division with this certificate of recognition, and it does read as a proclamation. So I think it's something our school division should be very proud of. So while none of the State Board of Education members are here, I wanted to present it to our division on behalf of them. So with that said, I'm presenting it to Mr. Carter as recognition for everything that everybody in our school division has done to achieve that accreditation status. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And then it's a very long, drawn-out, laborious process. And I thank Dr. Parrish, all of her staff, and everybody who was involved with that. Next, presentations and reports. First up, financial update with Mr. Bowen.
Good evening Chairman Carter, School Board members, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance update this evening, I wanted to bring the board up to date on the latest news that we have about sequestration. If you're not familiar with that, sequestration is the automatic cuts that are getting ready to take place here in the next budget cycle, federal budget cycle, in October. What we understand is that there are a number of federal programs that are impacted. We've been told by the Department of Education that we can expect cuts to our programs in the neighborhood of 7.5% to 10%. And what that means to our current budget is that our current federal budget is about $968,000, represents about 5% of our total budget. The amount, about 1/3 of that amount is exempt from sequestration. And that would be about $145,000 for our breakfast and lunch program, and $168,000 in our jobs bill. And the reason why jobs bill is specifically excluded is because those funds were appropriated to us in a prior federal fiscal year. So anything that was appropriated to us in a prior year is exempt. But what it means for the remaining $665,000 is that PCOSON could expect to lose between $50,000 and $65,000. Now, this is important to us because over the past four difficult budget years, we have seen our federal funds remain unchanged, with the exception of our FLAPP grant. We had one federal program. It was for a specific period of time and for a specific program. We had some employees attached to that, but we knew it was going away. But our other federal programs have remained largely unchanged, and that's going to change. Unless there's an agreement between Congress and the President, we're going to start seeing these cuts happen right away. Our first program that's going to be impacted is our Impact Aid. And the Impact Aid program here that we have in PCOSON is funds that we receive for our students that are federally connected, either parents in the military or parents that work on federal installation. We can expect about $13,000, $15,000 right away. And then the remaining programs that are scheduled to be cut, which would be our Title I and Title II, our largest grant, which is our special ed IDEA grant, preschool grant, career tech, they will all take place next year. And we will take those, bring those cuts to you in the upcoming budget cycle in December. So that's the latest information that we have on sequestration. As more information comes out, we will share that with the board.
Board questions? So, once October rolls around, there is no agreement met. Is that in place permanently for the year? Can they go back later, they finish their skirmish, and come to an agreement after the October deadline?
Certainly could always change, yes. And there seems to be, at this point, just a stalemate. Not sure really what's going to happen, but certainly something could happen after October, which will then make us whole, just maybe later part of the year. And it would really, in this year, it would only impact our, only affect our Impact Aid funds. So we're only looking at cuts to one program in the immediate, in the current budget, but it's going forward into the next budget cycle where we have additional, we already know that we're going to have to cut our state funds because we're still dealing with things like enrollment and jobs bill funds that are actually in the budget to support personnel in this budget. So, right now, we don't know what's going to happen, but certainly they could come back at a later, later point in the fiscal year and make those changes or restore those funds.
Now, would that, so if that happens, we would not face those federal cuts in the next upcoming budget cycle?
Most likely, we would not face those cuts.
I think what's important to note, and it's why we wanted to talk about, there's a lot of talk about sequestration. There's a lot of talk on, I don't know if I want to use the term in theory, but for lack of a better word, you know, if these cuts come, this many jobs could be lost in the Commonwealth. It could impact the economy, the state economy this way. So all of that's in play, too. So if the state economy is negatively impacted, we could see cuts to the state budget. What we wanted to make sure that you understand and that the community understands is, this is different from this. This is just flat, direct cuts that will come to our budget. This isn't speculating. This isn't theory. This isn't what-if. If sequestration comes into play, we know we could lose almost $65,000. We could lose also if all those other things come into play in the state. But I want everybody in the community to understand, there's no doubt we're losing money. You know, we're not crying wolf. We're not throwing numbers out with, this is, this is just the facts that we live in that we'll see a direct cut. But then I suspect if all the other things come into play that you're reading about in the media, we're going to see cuts to the state budget if you see a loss of revenue coming into the state because of increased unemployment and other issues that may come out of it.
Just a domino effect, correct?
Yes.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. All right. Next up will be our operations update from Mr. Papas.
Good evening, Mr. Carter, School Board, Dr. Parrish. As the summer is rapidly coming to a close, so are operations, trying to sew up all of the things that make the school look so new and shiny every year when the pitter-patter of children return. The area of custodial services, we are beating the clock. We are on schedule, and we'll have all these floors spick and span just in time for the return of students. In the area of maintenance, you may be aware that, as usual, we're quite busy. But this year, you may have also noticed that there's some roofwork happening at PES. That is the finalization of some remediation for that roof, and it is expected that the bulk, if not all of it, will be done prior to the start of school. Additionally, we've had numerous other projects, and I'm happy to inform you that they, too, have been completed. Among them are energy-efficient lighting in three of our gyms, refurbishment of the commons boys' and girls' bathroom at the high school, which if you had been in there, they sorely needed some attention, and repurposing of some space to make a handicap bathroom accessible in the former shop area. And of course, our stimulus-funded tennis project and security project are complete. As we move through security, PCPS has just added a new security system for the primary school and the high school. This device right here is now at the entry of both of those buildings. The new entry system is a keyless system, and it also sports a camera and two-way communication. This further improves the safety for our staff, and of course, our students, in a time that the press, we see what, how important safety is. Now, this system is not being deployed in the middle school or in the elementary school. Both of those facilities have front office locations and electronic access that make the need for this unnecessary. We have direct communication with our staff when you walk into those two buildings by With this system, visitors will come to the front door, they'll push a button, our staff will immediately engage them, they'll identify themselves, the staff will then allow them permission, and the visitors will then come to the front desk and proceed to get whatever visitor pass they may need that is inherent in each of the different schools. Prior to the start of school and the end of school, visitors can immediately access the doors and come in to drop children off or pick children up. They won't need to push the button. It's only during that part of the day where we want access to be limited only to teachers and students and authorized users. The new entry system is also designed for staff members, and our staff members will have badges just like this. Their ID badges will serve a dual purpose, and they'll walk up to the device, and they can swipe it near the device as a proximity sensor, and that will give faculty and staff access to the building according to their needs. After this presentation tonight, we'll have FAQ on our website for anybody who's interested to learn more. I think it's pretty comprehensive. People should be able to get all of their questions answered, more so than possibly in this demonstration. And thank you for your continued support of our safety and security, which enhances everybody at PCPS, especially our students.
Thank you, sir. Do you have questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if they have a plan for the after-hours, after-contract hours? Are they going to still be able to go in with their badge?
Yes.
Like if they left school and they came back at 8:00?
Yep, we've set up the parameters. We've set up the parameters so that each teacher has ample time. It's actually 6:30 to 9:30 daily that they can come in and go. So if they leave something in their car and they need to go, or in their office and they need to go back to their classroom, they just swipe the door and in they go.
The only time that they'll need to talk to the principal about setting up access is on the weekends.
On the weekends.
But that can be arranged for when they, when they need to, or over the holidays.
Yeah, this is being used in many schools. We're not trailblazers here, but this is the kind of security that we tried to do. And without this, it was not as efficient, and it was more cumbersome. This is much, much better for everybody, parents, students, faculty, staff.
So if they tried to go in on a Monday, I guess it's just the whole alarm system thing. I was curious about, you know, I know at my school, when it first started, it did, the alarms were set off more than once because, or people went there and their badges didn't work for the first holidays because the system didn't change that so that you could go in on that Columbus Day or whatever.
Sure.
Holiday was. So, I didn't know if that's something that has to be electronically fixed for the system?
Yeah.
Or is that, since it's just two schools, by each building?
Yeah, each building will take care of their own schedule, and the principals have each received training, as well as some of their key designated staff, on how to actually program and change the time parameters. Principals and/or their designee will be able to let someone in Christmas Eve, if need be, from, you know, Hawaii on their, on their desktop, if they can gain access. So the system is, nothing is perfect. And anytime humans get involved, we have a tendency to make things a little difficult. But basically, if we do everything right, it's going to be perfect.
Anybody else?
So the parents getting some sort of notification, or is it going to be in that first day's worth of stuff?
Yeah, we're actually going to be communicating this at the orientations next week, so parents will be receiving a little flyer that explains it. We're going to do, use our phone system the Friday before school starts to let them know in case they didn't go to orientation and didn't get the piece of paper, just to let them know the new system's being implemented at those two schools and how it works. So if somebody shows up Monday, Tuesday, the first day of school at noon, they're not surprised by it. And then we'll have all this information on our website. So, you know, we're trying to use a variety of avenues to communicate it, so they shouldn't be surprised Tuesday if they show up at noon and they didn't realize they now have to, you know, ring a bell to get in. So I'm not going to promise you that somebody doesn't realize that and doesn't end up with a question about it, but we're trying to communicate as much as we can to get that information out there early with them. And staff will be obviously well aware of it. Many of our staff are parents, and we'll spread the word, and it'll be helpful, so.
And how was this paid for?
This was stimulus funds.
Stimulus?
Yeah, this was one of those projects we were able to knock off, the CIP actually using stimulus funds, so it was nice.
So that probably answers the question. It's more proactive than reactive?
Yes.
We haven't had security issues?
No, we haven't had an issue that's concerned us. It's more the proactive to try and sort of lock down that access just a little bit more. Unfortunately, incidents like we've seen that's happened across our country most recently just shows you you can never be too prepared, so.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Anybody else?
Will somebody still be staffed in the high school at the?
No, the camera will actually be visible in the main office, so now we don't need somebody sitting out there. So it'll actually be the secretarial staff in the main office, one of them will look at it and let you in, and you'll walk straight in from there. So it's enabled us to move that away from the front door at both the primary school and the high school. The cameras are actually hooked up to the main office. And at the high school, the guidance office actually will have access to it, too, if they need it, so.
And at the high school, there's a lot of students that come in second period, you know, governor's school.
That's all been taken into consideration in the programming of the, of the doors.
Okay, but they don't have any kind of way to access other than to push the button and say, "I'm here, let me in."
During that other time that you were talking about where we know we're having a large influx, we've taken care of that.
I got it.
But if you were to walk in the middle of fourth period, then you would, you would push a button, and we would engage you, and you'd be given permission appropriately.
Now, the, I'm sorry. Is this, the camera obviously is only on the front door, is that correct?
No, we have a camera system that covers numerous hallways, but this system has a camera that focuses specifically on the person who pushes the button.
Right, so other than perimeter cameras that are videoing, you know, other accesses besides the front door?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's actually the, one of these cameras on the service entrance at the high school. The high school has two of these. The primary school, because of the size of the building, just has one. So if somebody's coming to the service, if a delivery's coming in through for the cafeteria, they'll actually be able to use that at the service entrance.
Anybody else? Okay, great. And just to make you aware, I've heard compliments already about the tennis courts, and so that's a good thing. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is instructional updates with Ms. Colley.
Well, I'll go ahead and say good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. I just want to take a minute before I get started to thank you for the warm welcome to the PCOSON community. It's been a good seven weeks, and I'm glad to be part of such a dynamic team. It's been great getting to know the staff and meeting some of the teachers, and I'm looking forward to meeting them tomorrow. This evening, though, I'll be sharing with you our SOL and preliminary accreditation data. So before we look at specific data, let's just follow up some of the presentations you had last year regarding the changes to the math SOL. The Board of Education did revise and strengthen Virginia's mathematics standards back in 2009 to, to ensure that all of our public schools in Virginia were preparing students for meaningful entry-level college work or workforce readiness. Last year's SOL tests were the first tests on those standards. Another important thing to remember is those tests had a lot of technology-enhanced items on them that were field-tested last year. About 15% of the high school and the middle school tests had online technology-enhanced items, and we also were looking at items that are, have changed in a way to have students really look at problem-solving in multiple steps. So different tests for the students, and as we look at the math results, we're going to look at them with little different eyes. Tonight, we're also just looking at state accreditation and not federal accountability in relation to No Child Left Behind. We are going to discuss that at the September meeting when those accountability measures are released. State accreditation depends on achievement around the benchmark rates in English, math, science, and history, and as well as last year for the first time, this graduate completer index. So how did we do? Based on preliminary data, all of our schools meet state accreditation requirements. In fact, you'll note that at 91% or above, our English scores are well above the state benchmarks that were 75% for elementary and 70 for secondary. And the same holds true in science and history, where our scores are in the high 80s and even the high 90s, and that's much higher than our benchmarks. And in math, where we're adjusting to new standards, we're adjusting to new tests, we're still above that 70% benchmark. And you'll note, though, that for accreditation purposes, the three-year average was used for our elementary math accreditation status. So, what does that mean for PCOSON City Public Schools? We have a lot to be proud of. Preliminary results indicate we meet all the state accreditation requirements. Our reading pass rates increased from 82% to 90% for our third-grade students. As noted, we know we have work to do in mathematics, and if we were to take those courses out, knowing that we have work to do, 24 other tests remain. And of those 24 tests, in English, social studies, and science, 23 of ours had pass rates of 88% or higher, and, and we also had 19 rates ranging from 90 to 99%. So we have some tremendous test scores. By our September meeting, the state will have released our federal, federal accountability measures, and we'll be prepared to share that data with you then. So, thank you.
Anybody have questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the math SOL. Do we already have some practice tests that have the technology-enhanced questions? Are we going to be, did they have that for this year, or is there going to be more software or something that can use to practice those?
That's a good question, and we're looking at multiple pieces of that. The state does release a tool for us to work through that actual practice and being able to manipulate. And we're also looking at some other online and computer-based simulations that would closely mirror that for our students to practice. We're also looking at really monitoring time in the computer lab and practice.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you feel that the math scores, it's a matter of, we don't need to work on content as we do with the type of tests given, rather than, I know for the reading program, we overhaul the reading program a bit to get our test scores up and everything. So now it seems like we're being tested for math more rigorously. Do we need a rebound of the math?
Well, I think two things have already happened that are moving us along first. And the first thing is, we had to take the test. We had those new standards out, and the school division worked with our existing curriculum to adjust the curriculum to meet the new SOLs. Now we've had some experience with it, and we'll be looking at that curriculum this year and saying, okay, where were some of the, where were some of the gaps? I mean, do know, and I know you know this, that our, the trend that we saw with our scores is statewide. So this is just not a PCOSON City Public Schools. You probably saw much of the media attention last week when the, these scores were put out. So across the state, school divisions are doing much the same that we're doing. We're going back to curriculum, saying, okay, what do we need to do it, do with it to make sure that we're teaching it in the way it needs to be taught for our kids to be successful? Are there other materials that can support it? I think we're going to see from the state probably some support come out, you know, to school divisions to try and help us. I don't, you know, the state overall sees that, you know, state averages drop, school division averages drop, so they're looking for ways to try and support us. So I think one is, as Ms. Colley said, we need to see what that test looked like. How were they testing these new standards, and what did it mean for our children? And so how can we better align what we do with our students? And part of that is aligning our assessments, our classroom tests, which with what those tests look like, so the students have the same experience that they will when they take the SOL test. And, you know, as part of this, and as we look at curriculum, I think we do need to look at the content that we're teaching as well, and teaching it at the level of rigor that the test, the test is at. So I think we're going to be attacking it from many prongs, and we're working with folks from across the state because we are all in this together in a lot of ways when you look at what's happened. And we know what's going to happen next year. We're going to see in the spring, new English and science tests. So I'm expecting we're going to be having a similar conversation, you know, next August, because I suspect we'll see the way those tests are delivered to be quite different as well.
I just have one more question. Is this year we're implementing the new reading at the elementary school?
Yes.
That we, William and Mary?
Yes. We had made some changes last year and did quite a bit in professional development and changes some structure of things being in the classroom, but now we're doing even more of that as we move into this year. So I think our reading will continue to improve as we move forward.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sidner, would you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Tonight, the consent agenda consists of A, approval of minutes of July special organizational meeting enclosed, C, I think that's supposed to be B, approval of financial reports enclosed, D, approval of personnel action enclosed, E, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed, and F, authorization to accept and expend funds in accordance with request enclosed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
My motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Next up is other matters for consideration. First is consideration of approval of minutes of the June regular meeting and the work session. Do I have a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Abstaining.
The motion passed by a vote of 6 to 1 abstain.
Thank you. Next up is consideration, the second reading of policy revisions, and there's a reading file enclosed. Dr. Parrish, would you like to take us through that, please?
Yes, in June, we brought forward recommended policy changes as first reading to you. Just a reminder, as is in your reading file, that our school board attorney does go through our policy to make sure it aligns with the legislation. our policy to make sure it aligns with the legislative changes that occur as a result of the work of the General Assembly each year. Two of the policies are, we're bringing forward to you are also to better align our practices and our policies. So I'm bringing forward to you tonight the same document that you actually received in June with the recommendation that you approve the policy changes as presented in second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve item B? So move. Second?
Second.
Does anybody have questions or comments about the second reading of the policy revisions? Anything there? Okay, Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidney?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment, Ms. McDowell?
We do not.
Okay, next we'll go into our communications and other matters. Dr. Parrish, would you kick us off, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. First, I'd like to welcome Jessie Spencer, our new school board student representative. This is her first time with us at the meeting, and we're very excited to have you here and look forward to working with you this year. I also want to say that we've had the pleasure of working with and meeting our new teachers. They started with us on Monday, and we're here today as well, and I think they've had a good experience on their first two days. We went to the Kiwanis breakfast this morning, and they all received $50 gift certificates from the Kiwanis to help set up their classrooms, which I thought was terrific. All of our veteran teachers return tomorrow, and with some of the talk that we've had tonight, we're going to be working with them on all sorts of instructional issues, as well as training some of them in the new security system. So much of what you're hearing tonight, they'll be hearing about in the coming days, and then obviously on Friday, I know many of you will be there, we'll have convocation. And a reminder to the community that school does start on September 4th, so remember those buses will be rolling. We'll have students at bus stops, and they back up traffic a little bit more than what you've been used to over the summer. So just a reminder that, that we'll be starting on the 4th, and we're excited to start another school year and continue to do great things with our children in Prokosaun.
All right, Jessie?
Thank you. So the open houses start with the primary school on August 29th. AM preschool is 10:30 to 11:00 AM. PM preschool is 11:15 to 11:45. Kindergarten is noon to 1:00. First grade is 2:00 to 3:00, and second grade is 3:00 to 4:00. At the elementary school, the open house is on the 29th with grades 3 through 5, all from 4:00 to 6:00. At the middle school, the open house is on the 28th with 6th grade starting from noon to 1:30, and grades 7 through 8 from 1:30 to 2:30. Also, during the times of the open house at the middle school, there will be a fundraiser. Chrysler will be holding test drives around the school's drop-off circle from noon to 3:30. If at least 120 people test drive the car, the school receives $2,000. Otherwise, it will be $10 per drive. At the high school, the open houses are from August 29th to August 30th. On the 29th, it's 11th and 12th grades from 8 to 10, and on the 30th, it's grades 9 and 10 from 8 to 10 as well. Also, at the high school, we are in the middle of band camp, and there will also be a car wash this Saturday. Football is back in season, and there is a game this Friday, the 24th, and the next game will be September 14th. So come out to the games and come support our boys on the field. That concludes my report. Thank you, board members.
All right.
Very good.
Did you breathe at all?
No.
You're welcome. All right, great, thank you very much, Jessie, and welcome aboard. Mr. Hux? Anything, sir?
Yes, I would like to thank the Kiwanis for the breakfast to kick off the school year. We do appreciate the support.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Okay, excited about the keyless entry for everybody. I think everybody's going to really like that. I know I've really liked that where I work, and being that it's my last year on the school board, I was going to just share a quote, an inspirational quote each month, and I liked this one. It's by Anthony D'Angelo, and this is for the students as they prepare to return to school. Develop a passion for learning. If you do, you will never cease to grow. That's all.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
I have to follow that. First off, I apologize for being late to the meeting this evening. Traffic in 17, which is usually not there, was there, and it was ever-present, and it took me back to my days in Fairfax, but wanted to thank the city council for pointing me here to the school board. I'm very excited about being here, and my thanks to staff and to fellow school board members for your patience, and I'm thanking some of you in advance for your patience, and for all the information you've given me at the start here. I will be asking questions, I will be asking lots of questions, and I really appreciate in advance all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Melton?
I'd like to welcome our new teachers and say a thank you to our returning teachers, and I think, look forward to seeing what Steve Papas's group have done to improve our buildings and clean them up. I'm sure they've been working very hard. Also was able to attend the State of the University presentation over at Old Dominion this morning, and it was very interesting, and I picked up a few ideas that I think we could use in the future in a few interesting ways, but enjoyed that as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cast.
I did owe all the other comments, so I have none.
Ms. Sidney?
I'd just like to welcome Jessie again, did a great job, and Gail too, glad to have you onboard. Look forward to another great year.
Okay, Jessie, welcome. Ms. Colley, welcome. And I appreciate you jumping in and getting busy. It looks like they laid a lot in your lap right, right at the get-go, but I do know that if you weren't up for the challenge, Dr. Parrish, I'd hire you. So we look forward to working with you this year. Convocation Friday, and I'll see everybody there. Welcome back, and seniors, make sure to make this your best one yet, okay? It's your last one in public education. Next up, material for board review. Do we have any?
Not this evening.
Okay, thanks. With that, we will adjourn for our work session where we're going to be discussing instructional data review, the crisis management plan, we're looking for an annual update there, and we're going to do a little work on our CIP. Thank you.